About seven o'clock on my clock. Just a reminder that BCTV does record and they start recording at seven. We're still waiting for one more commissioner to have a quorum.
And there's our fourth.
You're all set, Katie?
Recording in progress.
Yes, sir. We're recording.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Peter Bassman. I'm chairman of Branford's Inland Wetland Commission. I'll now open the commission's regular monthly meeting. It is April 10th, 2025. This evening's meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting using the Zoom software platform in accordance with the Connecticut Public Act 22-3. Documents referenced during the meeting are available on the town, in the town hall or on the agency's webpage. The final agenda for this evening's meeting was filed on April 8th and is also posted on the website. Does the staff have any changes to this evening's agenda?
Amy Frederick, Inland Wetland Agent, no changes. I do want to point out that the public hearing will be opened and continued to the April 24th meeting, so there will be no public comment at this evening's meeting. But the opportunity for public comment would be available at that April 24th meeting.
A couple of things first to provide the public exposure for every community television. As noted, it is recording the meeting. We're certainly thankful for their participation and the public can view the proceedings on the cable TV channel associated with their service. For an accurate and complete record for this evening's discussion, each time a statement is made or a comment made, please identify who the party is that's speaking. This applies to any party wishing to participate. Those wishing to speak can use the raise your hand feature and we'll do our best to make sure that we recognize the hand in the raised position. Also, once the meeting has started, please mute your microphone so that we don't get any feedback. Any questions need to be directed to the chairman before proceeding. The intent is to have the meeting run smoothly and get a complete and accurate record. Does Wetland staff have any additional comments before proceeding this evening?
I, Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland Agent, I will just also note that I will be recommending that items, sorry, 6A and 6B be continued to the May 8th meeting. As I anticipate that we'll have some of the materials that can be available for review that have been requested for review, but not available this evening, but I expect they will be prior to that meeting. So 6A and 6B, I would expect to be continued to the May 8th meeting.
Again, that was item 6A and B?
Correct.
Thank you. We'll now take our customary roll call. When I announce your name, please indicate by saying present. Commissioner Gokowski.
Commissioner Gokowski, present.
Commissioner Armrod.
Commissioner Armrod, present.
Commissioner Mersky.
Commissioner Mersky, present.
Let's see, Inland Wetland Director and Enforcement Officer Jamie Frederick.
Present.
Inland Wetland Associate Katie Blanchett.
Present.
So we have four commissioners this evening. We have a quorum, barely, and will proceed. All commissioners are seated and able to vote this evening. Is there any commissioner that feels that they need to recuse themselves from an item on the agenda this evening? Please indicate at this point. Okay, first up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, March 27th, 2025. Your motion to accept those minutes?
Commissioner Gokowski, I put a motion forward to accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Commissioner Armrod, I'll second that.
Any further discussion on those meetings, meeting minutes? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Is there any abstention? Okay, first up, we have a public hearing, Inland Wetland 250101, as staff indicated that this is being tabled this evening, no discussion. We knew that at our last meeting, that given the number of questions that were raised at the meeting, that there may be an opportunity to extend it, given the comments. And so that's happened. We're going to meet again on this item on April 24th. We have two applications for review. First up, BRJW, 250301, 4581 Short Rocks Road, the Supply Ponds, 534 hiking trail along North Chestnut Street to Lower Supply Pond. We have material in the drop box on that. And who is going to speak for the applicant? Mr. Shanahan?
Yes, I am. Richard Shanahan. Thank you. Richard Shanahan, I'm the chair of Branford Parks and Open Space. What this application is for is to create a, basically a path along North Chestnut Street. Over the last so many months, we've been in the process of creating a loop trail around the lower pond. And there's one section along North Chestnut Street where people right now are forced to walk on the road. For the most part, this loop trail is on the road, but on Short Rocks Road, the they were able to construct three speed humps, which have been very successful in slowing down traffic. They do not want to put any speed humps on Chestnut Street. So this is our attempt to sort of improve safety, if you will. Right now, there's about a 10-foot berm or median between the road and the pond. And what I'm looking to do is ideally utilize that that space to create a three-foot, oh, that 10 feet, use three feet of it to create a path. There are several boulders in the place now. We'll have to relocate those. We will not be cutting any of the woody shrubs and trees along the shoreline. Ideally, we're going to do minimal amount of disturbance. If nothing else, we're going to sort of skim the topsoil and just put down a very thin layer of gravel. And then in a couple of different locations, we're going to put a four-by-four post to indicate the location of the, of the trail.
Mr. Commissioner Bassman, Mr. Shanahan, in terms of the gravel, do we know what size gravel we're going to be putting down? I'm just concerned about in a heavy rain, the movement.
Offhand, I do not. It's going to be basically the same size as what we use down by the the bridge below the dam. And that's been there for, what, about a year and a half now, and that has not moved at all. And it will be compacted a little bit, so it's not going to just be loose gravel. There, if I can also, there's one section of about 40, 50 feet where there are some plants typical of wetland. And we're planning to put a boardwalk over that, as seen in the photograph here, just to sort of overstep that one area. It's not necessarily wet, but there are, you know, it's definitely wetland soils.
This is Commissioner Mersky. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. This is Commissioner Mersky. You mentioned the plants, a typical of wetlands that you just mentioned just before. Do you have more detail about the types of plants?
I don't. If I could ask Jamie to...
Jamie Frederick, I'm an Inland Wetland Agent. So I met with Richard Shanahan on site, I don't know, probably a month and a half ago. And I'm not sure what vegetation was on site, to be honest with you. Everything was dormant. But it looked like it was an area with some wetland plants. So that's why I asked if they were planning to do something different in that area and Richard said that they could do this boardwalk through that area to help make sure that that area has as little impact as possible. Kind of as a compromise. And so usually in an application, the commission generally would want to see an A2 survey and wetland delineation. However, in certain cases, the commission waves those requirements. Something like this, a recreational trail is certainly a case where the A2 survey would generally be waived. And I think, given the nature of the proposed construction, the wetland delineation could also be with.
Mr. Bassman, can you put the map up again, Jamie?
So if you're coming from Route 1 and you're going under 95 up to the Supply Ponds, this trail basically would be from the first parking lot area on the right-hand side up to the second parking lot area.
Yeah, it's just a stretch from the parking lot at the old Ice House to the parking lot of the peninsula.
And just for, Mr. Commissioner Bassman, just for clarity, how much of that is, is the at-risk safety aspect?
Well, what we're doing, for the last 200 feet of that, we're going to sort of skirt into the woods a little bit. That's where the ponds end and there's just some upland that's going to allow us to get off the road more so. So realistically, it's that first 270 feet.
Yeah, so about half.
Yeah, a little bit more than half.
Yeah, a little bit more than that. Okay. And, and you're you're compressed because of that 10-foot swath as to how, how distant you can be from Chestnut?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to sort of lean more toward Chestnut Street. If you look at some of the photographs, I think that shows, yeah, like number one here, number one and number two, you can see where people are walking right now on the road. And people come around that bend and that's not the best. So we're proposing to go over on that berm, that grassy area to the right. And again, so between the woody shrubs, if you will, and the road, that's about five or six feet on average.
Still pretty, still pretty tight in there, yeah.
Yeah.
It is, it is. But on photo number three, you can see where the curve, the road curves to the right in the back there. So cars coming into the Supply Ponds are coming around that curve and they're still moving, even though we're trying to slow them down. And I see people with dogs out there and what have you, and this is just trying to get them off the road, basically. We're not trying to build any elaborate trail, if you will. It's just sort of a pathway and smooth this out and put some gravel on so it really does look like a walkway.
And I guess to that point, Mr. Commissioner Bassman, again, are we are we going to be liberally using those boulders around that curved area? It seems from a safety standpoint, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Well, well, that curved area is not Supply Ponds, that's as you enter the Supply Pond. But all along the road, you can see where the boulders were placed by Public Works years ago to prevent parking. So yes, we're going to utilize, you know, sort of reposition those. I was hoping to meet with Gary Zalinski out there just to get his input on the placement of the boulders. And some of them are actually quite large, they're going to have to be removed and use, you know, smaller boulders just to really set, you know, some sort of, as you say, protected area. And also prevent people from parking on it. That's what's happened in the past.
Amy Frederick, Inland Wetland Agent, just to kind of tag on to the meeting with Public Works out there. I did ask the town engineer to take a look at the application materials and he did point out that there is a catch basin on the side where the trail is being proposed and he recommended or requested that a that a member from either Public Works and/or the Town Engineering Department be part of any pre-construction meeting, just to make sure that there's, you know, not conflicts with that catch basin. And to that end, we could also discuss any, you know, relocation of boulders relative to the roadway.
Yeah, and I did talk to the town engineer and he was also concerned, I guess there may be some other drainage structures out there that are not on the record. But in sort of walking this a few times, I don't see how we're going to interfere with that at all. And actually, where the boardwalk is going to go, that appears to have been dug out quite a few years ago by, I'm going to guess, Public Works. To sort of, I guess, create sort of a drainage area. That part of North Chestnut Street has a tendency to flood in heavy rains.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Fisher Armrod.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks, Steve. Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. I guess my only comment would be to, you know, if there's no, you know, sediment and erosion controls, just to limit the work, you know, during dry periods and whatever bare ground that's disturbed or whatever ground that had vegetation on it and is stripped, you know, get gravel on it as soon as possible. Maybe it's hopefully the same day.
Exactly. I see this entire project, you know, lasting a day, maybe two days, if you will, because it is fairly straightforward. I think the only part that may take a little bit longer on that schematic I have for the Supply Ponds, the last 200 feet where it veers into the woods, that's going to require a little bit more work, but again, it's away from the water. So I don't see that as being an issue, but the entire stretch around the water, I think it's going to be very straightforward.
This, this is Commissioner Gokowski. I, I mean, I grew up in the area and so very familiar with it. My, the only thing that I was, I have no issue with you doing, I'm just looking at as far as a safety standpoint of view, those boulders would be, it would be a good idea to place those boulders on the, to protect the walking paths. So when cars are coming around, because I know how cars drive over there. I mean, people, they don't obey the speed limit over there. They don't understand the speed limit. But I would align the road with those boulders to not only protect the walking path, but also protect the pedestrians that are going to be walking in that area. And it shouldn't be a big deal for Public Works to be able just to move those boulders around. They have the right equipment to do it.
Correct. What we don't want to do is get too close to the road either. So, you know, that could cause a hazard. So it's trying to find that happy medium, if you will.
Is staff comfortable with this project, Jamie?
Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland Agent, I, the application was for receipt at the last meeting, so it is actionable this evening if the commission wants to make a decision. I, so my recommendations for conditions would include a pre-construction meeting with Inland Wetland staff and staff from DPW and/or the Engineering Department. Perhaps to the point that Chairman Bassman made earlier that the gravel should be non-flotable in nature. Final inspection and standard condition and general provisions of all permits. And we could also add for Armrod's point that the work shall be done during a dry period.
Mr. Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, there isn't a written staff report on this, is there?
No. I thought it was fairly straightforward. So those are the ones I've listed out.
I don't want to have you repeat those. Did every commissioner hear those considerations for that staff proposed, which was a pre pre-construction meeting, stoned and applied, that's not movable, dry period construction. And I think there was one more, Jamie?
Final inspection, inspection and standard conditions and general provisions of all permits.
Does any commissioner want to add anything or amend that that, those comments from staff as part of the conditions for this 250301?
This is Commissioner Gokowski. I, I feel comfortable to allow Jamie to do what she needs to do to move this project forward. I'm sure Mr. Shanahan wants to try to get this done before summertime and spring to, you know, this is a good time to get this done, while the spring is done. I have no issue at this stage of the game to let Jamie follow up with this and let her run with the ball and do an agent approval.
Amy Frederick, Inland Wetland Agent, it is actionable and I think the commission should make the decision, especially since we don't have a wetland delineation and we don't know the process through the wetland and I can't do anything that requires approval of activity within a wetland.
Okay. So we'll, we'll need to, can that constitute your, your comments and my follow-up as a motion, Jamie, or do we need?
Somebody needs to support the motion.
Yeah, I think I got it. Just Commissioner Armrod, I, I could, I can go for it here. I'd like to make a motion on BRIW 250301, 4581 Short Rocks Road, a construction of a approximately 530-foot hiking trail in Supply Ponds. With the conditions that a pre-construction meeting be held with either Branford Public Works or the Engineering Department or both. That the gravel used as the trail surface be of a proper size so that it doesn't wash away easily during heavy rain events, non-flotable in nature. That the construction of the trail be conducted during a dry period. A final inspection be performed and the standard conditions and general provisions of all permits.
There a second on that motion?
This is Commissioner Mersky. I'll second the motion.
Mr. Commissioner Bassman, I guess one thing we also probably look to add to that motion is that the commission agrees to waive the wetland delineation on this application.
Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland Agent, I don't think that needs to be part of the motion.
Great. Do we have a second? I'm going to take a vote now. Commissioner Gokowski?
Yeah, Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Mersky?
Commissioner Mersky, aye.
Fisher Armrod?
Commissioner Armrod, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you all for your input. I just have one question. Jamie, do you want to be involved in the pre-construction meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, the only reason I hesitate, it's so hard for me to try to pin down Gary Zalinski, but I'll see what I can do with your schedule and his.
Well, we can work with the Engineering Department as well and see what we can arrange.
Okay. Very good. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
All right, next up, Inland Wetland 250302, 101 Hotchkiss Grove Road, also known as 118, the ponds, remove and replace a failing timber retaining wall.
Good evening. Yep, good evening. Marcus Paddock, a professional engineer and land surveyor from Godfrey Hoffman Hodge, 26 Broadway, North Haven, representing the condominium and select property management, who manages the condominium. Good evening. This is, commission, this is a project, an existing condominium, well-established that has a failing timber retaining wall along the edge of a wetland in between a wetland and a driveway. The, the plan is to remove the 350-odd feet of timber retaining wall from the driveway, so up slope of the retaining wall without ever traversing down to the base of the retaining wall, because that is where the wetlands are. As, as we...
Screen share or is the applicant screen sharing here?
I, I can screen share or I can provide permission to screen share. Do you have a preference?
I, I, I guess if I screen share, at least then I can point at things, so.
Okay.
Let's see, let me share a screen one. Okay, so I'll zoom in on, does, is everyone familiar with where this is or, if not?
I can steal real quick and do a, show the GIS map.
So here's the, here's, here's Google Maps. So we have Elizabeth Street, Hotchkiss Grove Road. The condominium is, is here in its bulk. The area we are speaking of is just down this driveway, this first driveway, there are two units adjacent to it. The retaining wall comes down along this driveway and wraps a little bit around the corner, retaining essentially just the driveway and some trees at the top of the slope. We did not have the wetlands delineated. The, the the historic record seemed to indicate and visual inspection would imply that the wetlands are, the wetland boundary is essentially the base of the wall, which is sort of borne out by Tamag Ice Pond being right at the base of it. So we did not delineate the, have the wetlands delineated. Um, so we did not delineate the, have the, the wetlands delineated by a soil scientist. We would stipulate that, and the base of the wall is essentially the wetland delineation line. And, and we do not intend to encroach into the wetland from beyond the base of the wall. Um, I, I would also say that we prepared up our plan um, for this, which is a partial, um, it, it's essentially a plan of just the wall. We do not have a full property boundary survey, um, that was done recently. This parcel is large and, um, a, a, a full survey of the entire site is cost prohibitive. Um, the, the portion of the site that we do show was an A-two survey of that area. A-two indicates the, the level of accuracy, not the, not the type of survey. So this would be an A-two, T-two, um, topography, uh, partial topography survey of this area. Um, so we, we can see in, in, in the plan, the, the driveways, um, which are asphalt, uh, coming down, there's a, a, a slope and, and that, or it's, it's reasonably flat at this time, um, and are, and an existing retaining wall. We propose to take that whole retaining wall out. Um, for this first section, we propose a two-to-one slope, uh, grading from the base of the wall at its existing elevation up. Um, still leaving a, a, a certain amount of, of flat area at the top to one backstop the curb and to provide, uh, a snow shelf. Um, and then to, a- and I'll get into the, the, the planting, but fairly densely, uh, replant that, that slope, um, once it is created. As, as we come down the driveway, the retaining wall get, the existing retaining wall gets somewhat taller, um, up to about four and a half to five feet and therefore, uh, can't be, we don't have enough space to grade it out. And so we propose, um, using a gabion rock wall, um. One, it's porous nature allows for, for drainage, uh, directly through it. It is, uh, relatively easy to build, um, can be, um, sourced from local rock. Um, and so we felt like it was an elegant, um, solution to a retaining wall that's somewhat more resilient, um, than the timber wall that is there presently. Um, it also will allow for us to plant, um, above the wall and, and, and not create um, any pressure against the wall with, with roots and whatnot. Small roots and things can, can worm their way through the rocks a little bit. And, and the, the particular plants we've chosen are, are, are plants that, that tend to not creep a huge, huge amount, um. And, and we can certainly discuss the, the different plants as we get into that portion. Um, so this is the, the existing layout as, as, as we've proposed it. Um, we have a grading plan that, I'll zoom in a little, that proposes, um, some eastern red bud, some scarlet oak and some red cedar. These were proposed by our landscape architect on staff as, as a good choice for this area. Um, a- a- and, and, and will mature nicely, um, in this area. As, as, as a first layer of protection, um, when the grading is completed, we do intend to put a New England wetland seed mix down, um, which will allow for soil, um, stabilization much quicker, um, than the larger root masses as they establish, um. That's, that's pretty well the, the crux of, of my presentation, um. So we have a, 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 a retaining wall that's essentially three tiers, um, wrapping around this last end and then from there a slope. Um, I, I, I did meet with, uh, with Jamie onsite and, and we reviewed some of, some of the, uh, aspects of this application is notably the condition of the existing wall and the lack of a space to, um, store any, any, any material onsite. So we do not, w- w- we do not propose to stockpile material onsite. I, I think as they remove material, they'll have to, you know, truck it off. And if they need to bring some of that back, um, a- 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 as they move through the project, then they will have to bring that material back. Um, there just isn't, there just isn't room between the driveways and the wall. And, and since all of the land below the dr- the wall is a, is a wetland and we certainly wouldn't stockpile on a wetland. Um, I did review, uh, Jamie's, uh, comments and, um, and, and conditions of approval. And I, and I do not have any, any particular issue with any of them. I would note that, um, she does note that we have a, a, a two-to-one slope, um, for the portion that we are sloping, not a three-to-one as is required by the, um, the planning and zoning commission and, and we are happy to request of the planning and zoning commission that they allow that two-to-one slope. There is not enough space to create a three-to-one slope. And we do not believe that for the height of this slope and the extensive planting that we are proposing, um, there is a real danger of erosion, um, from that two-to-one slope. So I, I, I sort of gave you a lot there. Um, if there's any questions or comments or?
If, this, this question of Goklowski, um, uh, you, you stated you're not going to be doing any work in the, uh, wetland area. But what is your proposed, what equipment are you going to be using to remove the, uh, existing retaining wall?
Uh, I would assume they'll use an excavator, but they'll, they'll, they'll park it on the pavement, um, above and just reach down and pull it up. Towards.
Cause I'm, I'm looking at some of the pictures and I noticed that there's some trees that are right close to the retaining wall that are actually in the wetlands, it looks like. Um, and, and I see that there, there's a very large tree, uh, by the, uh, it's the higher section of the retaining wall in the pictures, it looks like. Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm not, I'm not saying, I, I, I'm not saying what, what you want to propose is not feasible. I'm just concerned about the equipment that's going to be going in there because when you remove those, uh, you, you're gonna have some disturbance in the wetland area when you remove those timbers. I mean, it's, you know.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, they are proposing to remove a significant amount of the trees that are, uh, located above. The retaining wall, because they can gain access, with the exception of this one tree, um, over by the pond side.
Yeah. The, the remaining trees above the retaining wall, we're going to remove all of those, um, and, and replant them. Uh, well, replant with different, uh, material. But all of the pines and, and, and holly and whatnot that is along the top of the slope above the retaining wall, that all will have to come out. Um, and, and, and we believe with an excavator, we can pull the wall up towards us, um, without having to take any kind of an excavator or equipment down into the wetland.
And, and, and you're going to be doing, uh, you're going to be replacing the timbers with stone?
In, in, in this bottom portion where the wall is, is higher, yes. So they will prepare a, 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 a flat surface at the base of the, the retaining wall, put the gabion baskets down in there. Those can be transported essentially by hand. Um, they'll probably be lifted by the excavator, but placed by hand. Um, with someone just standing at the base, um, and, and then they just dump stone in, close it and, and wire it shut.
Okay.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so these photos, they kind of start at the, um, eastern side of the, the wall where they're proposing to grade it out to a two-to-one slope. Too many things.
Starts up in this area.
Um, and then as we keep going in, I think somewhere around this tree here, um.
Do you want to share and then?
Oh, am I not screen sharing?
No, I, I, I was.
Oh, oh, I thought I stole it.
Yeah.
Um. Is everyone seeing?
Now we can see you, yes.
Okay.
Your screen.
Um, so I think that this tree to remain here might be, this tree, um, and this is where, approximately where that, that wall would, the new wall would start. Um, and as you can see, the wall is in fact failing, um, and does need some repair with. And, uh, as you go further down along the wall, the wetland definitely seems to be pretty much at that toe of wall. Up, uh, closer to the entrance of the drive, it might, it might be a little bit of distance, but it's pretty close in this area. Um, given that the toe of wall is proposed to be in the same location and that this is an existing wall that's failing, that's being proposed to be replaced, I think there's room for the commission to waive the wetland delineation. That's ultimately up for the commission to decide if, if you think you need that information. But I, I think, given that it's an existing failing wall rather than a new proposed wall, um, that's something to take into consideration in waiving that wetland delineation requirement, um, for a little bit of history. This is what the site looked like before it was developed. Um, and this is generally that wetland complex that is next to the wall now. Um, oh, shoot. And then, so if you look at this as-built survey, um, you can see the wetland line follows approximately what was the toe of slope. I'm not, it, it, this looks like it was a natural grade, so it might have been before the wall was put in. But it looks like the toe of slope is the new edge of wetland, um, after construction of the development. Um, and then also kind of just in regards to some of the things I had highlighted on the staff report, I think the applicant has clarified regarding the level of information on the site plan and that it's A-two, T-two. So I think, given that, um, I don't see how having a full site survey would be any bene- fish, more beneficial. And we have the highest level of information we could be expecting for the area of concern. So I think it would be appropriate to consider the site plan, um, levels satisfactory. Um, jump back to the photos. Um, so there is.
Commissioner Baseman, am I understanding that the function of the wall, uh, when we take that down is going to be, um, what's going to replace the, 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 uh, wall is going to be a re-grading? And that that will accomplish the same, uh, effect that the wall was intended to do?
Yes.
Really good screen. Share again. For part of, part of the wall, if the case.
So, y- yes, the, 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 the existing wall, if I, uh, if I zoom in just a little bit here. Here we go. The existing wall is, it has a, a, a small return and then comes down along this line. Um, and, and as we get just past this, this catch basin in the, the, the pavement, um, and to that tree, um, which Jamie pointed out, um, there's enough of, the, the, the wall is short enough and there's enough land between the toe of that retaining wall and the back of the curb for us to slope at a two-to-one, have a small, flat shelf, um, and, and serve the same function as the wall. Um, and, and that's why we didn't, we didn't see the need to propose a retaining wall all the way across. Um, we feel like we, you know, the, the more mechanical elements we introduce, such as a, 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 a retaining wall, the, the, the greater chance we have of those things failing or us being right back here again, not in my lifetime, but, uh, you know, at, at some point, replacing that, um, with another mechanical means of holding back the soil. Um, and so I, I felt that sloping that area where it is feasible and is, is, was a prudent, um, means. Es- especially given we can, we can arm it with, uh, quite a lot of vegetation and, and, and which obviously these folks who live in these buildings would prefer to have a nice vegetated barrier, um, along the edge of the driveway, uh, such as they have now. Um, we do get to a point about, about where that tree is, where the retaining wall becomes too tall, um, for us to be able to slope it and, and still meet the back of the curb where it is and not interfere with that. Um, and so it is from that area down around the corner, um, where we propose the, a, a new wall, but a, a gabion retaining wall, which, which is essentially a wire basket, um, which they fill with fairly large rock, um. What, large and small rock, they've tightly packed the rock into those retaining wall or into the, into the baskets, um, cover the back with, with a filter fabric so that it doesn't become clogged with all kinds of clay and allow or, or silt or sand or whatever's behind it to transmit through it, um, via water.
This, this Christian Baseman, I guess the, the question I have with all of that is, how does, wh- what happens to the hydrology of water movement when we're going to replace, uh, a failing wall with a graded slope? And what happens to, you know, the, the flow once it's penetrated the, uh, the ground?
I'm, I'm not sure that I, it's, I, I, I guess I'm not sure what you're concerned. Are, are the surface runoff are you concerned about or, or the groundwater? Um, the groundwater should, well, the, the groundwater from a slope, you know, will follow the, 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 the grade generally, um, once ground, once water's seeped into the ground, it generally follows the grade. So it will follow the grade down to where the wetland is. Um, I, it's possible that, that a seep cre- is created. Um, we don't see any evidence of water really blasting through the wall from the ground. Uh, we're, we're not talking about a really tall slope. We're talking about three or four feet. Um, and so I, I don't.
What about the stormwater side?
I'm sorry?
What about stormwater?
The, the existing stormwater consists of this catch basin with a four-inch, uh, the only pipe that we can see is a four-inch PVC pipe that, that goes out towards the wetland. And I, I do not know where it terminates. We could not find it, um.
I think one of the questions was, is it functioning today?
It, there's no, there's no complaint from the, from, from the folks who live and in this area that, that it's not functioning. Uh, so we, we don't have any ponding or, you know, stormwater issues that they have reported to me.
This Commissioner Armrod, this, this, do we know if the, so it dis- it looks like it discharges at the base of the current wall? Or you said you're not really sure because you can't find it, but is there any indication of like scouring or sediment, sediment being discharged?
There, there's, there's, in this area where this catch basin is, there is a fair amount of what appears to be sediment overtopping the wall. Um, so, so some buildup at the base of the wall, um.
But it's not necessarily, it certainly goes to the discharge of the stormwater.
It's not, it's not from this pipe. Um, it, it, and, and maybe that's, this is the lowest spot and maybe it just goes over the bank and washes some of the bank down over the wall. That, that could be, um, I, I, I would think as. I I I would think as we, as we do this work, we certainly. You know, could look for that, for that determination of that four-inch pipe. You know, by hand, it's not a big, it's certainly not a big pipe and and we certainly could dig with with it by hand and be. Judicious in our excavation, um, so as not to make a huge mess, um. I I if if we could find that and and clean it out, we we certainly could armor. Just a small portion where the outlet is so that, you know, with some riprap to avoid any scour. It's a, it's an existing condition, um, that that we would look to improve and. And and remedy, and we certainly could, you know, uh. Have the town engineer and uh uh and and staff come. Throughout the process and 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 monitor and and advise.
Yeah, great, yeah, thank you, that uh Commissioner Armrad, um. Yeah, I guess my only concern is just, yeah, like outlet protection, um. If we think it's gonna convey. You know, enough flow where it could scour. The the base, the toe of slope or the base of the wall, um. Oh, yeah, you have toe of slope there, um, yeah, that that would be something, um. I I I'd like to see, um. Yeah, that's like it's my only comment right now.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, we were looking for that outlet the other day and we were out there and we didn't really find it. Um, we didn't, you know, dig or anything, um, but there is some washout, I think it's, I think it's over top from the the wall, I don't think it's associated with the pipe. Uh, it does look like there's some sediment that has, um. Overtopped the timbers a little bit in that area, nothing substantial, but certainly. You know, indicating that a repair does need to be made, um. And I do have a condition that kind of speaks to that, since I'm not sure how much time elapsed between now and when the repair will actually be made and what the condition will look like at that point. Um, I do think uh another condition could be considered, um. You know, that if if that pipe is exposed during the repair work, that outlet protection be provided to prevent.
Wouldn't that wouldn't that pipe beyond the existing, the original? Plans for the property?
This development was in the nineteen eighties, so the plans are. The plans and what was built, um. Uh, it's it's not the same as what we would expect from today's development.
Yeah, but they would still put the drainage pipes, they would still put some type of drain. Was very tough in the eighties, believe me, I know, I did.
I all I can say is that, uh, let me screen share again, I'll show you the as-built that we have, it doesn't show the retaining wall and it doesn't show a drainage pipe. Um, so this is this the slope area in question, it looks like it shows boulders or or perhaps a retaining wall in just this very end corner. But the wall in fact extends probably to about here. And it does not show the catch basin, it does not show the pipe, it does not show the wall. And this is from. Eighty-seven, I'm gonna guess eighty-three.
It the uh, can you put the proposed site plan up, uh, Jamie? The, there's a, is is that a driveway that's uh a along that, uh, right? Is that sheet flow off uh the driveway toward the wetland?
There's a curb.
Oh, there's a curb, okay, thank you.
It looks like maybe on the very end, do you recall? Does it sheet blow off the?
Um, it it's it's slightly higher down that end, so.
And then there's, um, additional drainage throughout the complex, so it does not she blow over the edge of pavement.
Gotcha. Any other questions, comments from the commission? Want to put up the, uh. Uh, you wanna put up the staff report, Jamie?
So Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, uh. Application for you was received, there's no activity proposed within the wetland slash water force. Uh, wetland delineation was not submitted, as I've stated, I think, I think it's probably okay if the commission decides to waive it, does it, do any commissioners feel differently? Not hearing any objections. Um, and then site plan received, we've already been over. Um, it is an A two survey, uh, I didn't see that note on the plan, I originally had that box checked that it was, and so I must have seen it previously and missed it. In my second review today. Adjacent municipality and RWA notice were not necessary, sediment and erosion controls. Um, road control plant has been provided, um, we've got a silt fence at the toe of the wall slash slope. Um, not called out on the plan, however, there is details for inlet protection and anti-tracking pad and stockpiling erosion sedimentation controls. We already discussed this evening that there's not really any space on site to stockpile, so, um, I think. Typical of past uh practice, the commission would probably want to revise site plan, clearly documenting such. Um, that could potentially be a condition of approval, if the commission is satisfied with that, uh, to be submitted prior to start site work. Stormwater cha- proposed, no changes proposed to existing conditions with the stormwater, however, we did discuss that outlet pipe. Um, and that if that is exposed, that it should have, uh, outlet protection to prevent washout. Landscaping plan, we've been over and the applicant did address that they had a landscape architect, um. Look at the plans and provide plants that were appropriate, um, and discuss. The Gabian wall has a little bit more opportunity for uh vegetation than the timber wall that was on site. Um, town engineer reviewed and proposed site, reviewed the proposed site plans, recommended hydroseeding on two-to-one slopes. And suggested inquiring about the four-inch PVC pipe, which we were just talking about. Um, IW staff note that there's a three-to-one slope requirement for the zoning regulations. Uh, and I suggested that the applicant talk with planning and zoning department about that. Uh, we're currently a little bit short-staffed, I'm not sure if they were able to have that conversation. Um, I did put forth a possible condition for consideration. That if the toe of slope remain in the same location as the proposed two-to-one slope, so essentially if if they could. If they had to revise the plans to be a three-to-one slope and they could push it out up towards this curb line. Instead of pushing the toe of slope out, that that could be reviewed by staff in light of. You know, the fact that it would be a less steep slope and it wouldn't be encroaching anymore on the wetlands, um. I'm not sure if they can do that or if they'll have to do that, but. Um, just as a way of potentially trying to keep things from coming back to the commission, um, just horrible picking my tabs this evening. So if there's any more information the commission feels they need, you do have time to continue review of the application, but should you decide to. Remove forward with. The application, some conditions for consideration are. Pre-construction meeting, initial erosion control inspection, pre-planting meeting and final inspection. Given the proximity of the wetland to the toe of slope of the. Toe of slope and toe of wall, work shall be completed during dry period to help prevent unnecessary delays while work. Work area is in a disturbed state and to help minimize any packs impacts to the wetland area. Prior to start of site work, a revised plan shall be submitted outlining that there will be no onsite stockpiling. All erosion, all equipment shall remain outside of wetland areas and up slope with a proposed erosion and sedimentation control measures. Any proposed vinyl grades of three-to-one or greater shall be hydroceded as seasonally appropriate to ensure propped vegetation establishment. Should the plans be revised to propose a three-to-one slope in lieu of a two-to-one slope, such revision can be submitted or reviewed by the duly. Review and approval by the duly authorized agent if the revised toe slope matches the approved toe slope. If the toe of slope is moved closer to the wetland, the revised plan must be reviewed by the agency. Any changes required in context with general notes number eleven on sheet C one point O must be reviewed and approved by the agency or duly authorized agent. Any revisions to the landscape plan shall be reviewed and approved by the duly authorized agent, such. Should any substitutions be proposed, preference should be given to native plants. Um, the small pile of cut woody debris adjacent to the base of the existing retaining wall shall be carefully removed to restore. Natural condition, any sediment which may have. Transported through or over the wall at time of repair work should be removed as needed to provide. Ground stabilization and ensure the base of trees are not buried. The extent of any work that may be necessary should be reviewed at the pre-construction meeting. When the current site conditions can be assessed and standard conditions and general provisions of all permits. Um, again, you might wanna also consider a condition about that. The outlet from the catch basin. And the other thing that I didn't put in here is monitoring, um. I think that the commission. Uh, might wanna consider whether monitoring is required, um, I think this is a kind of project where you would consider. Three years or the five years to be reduced to three if three is successful, um. And, yeah. And that would be by a wetland scientist or a landscape architect or botanist. Usually look for eighty-five percent.
Yes, Commissioner Vasman, I think, given the revegetation. It's gonna be required on this project as well as the, uh, trees that are being put in, I I can't see us. You know, taking a different tack regarding monitoring and survivorship. Uh, resiliency than than other projects, so I I I think unless. Unless there's a compelling reason not to, we we need to include the monitoring. And tha- that's kind of a standard phrase that we have, is it not?
It is, um, if you want, I can. Take a minute and try and pull some language up real quick that you guys can reference. Assuming my computer decides to. Does the commission feel that a bond is necessary or or just the monitoring?
This is Commissioner Boclaski, I don't feel a bond is necessary, I think the monitoring will be sufficient.
This is Commissioner Vasman, Jamie, what what are the, uh? What are the trees that are being added?
I believe. We've got eastern red bud, scarlet oak and eastern red cedar.
Do we have experience that would indicate resiliency is an issue with any of those species?
They are all native, uh, can we northeast Connecticut plants, so.
Yeah, I. Again, I think this is a kind of a unique. Situation, given that it's a repair, um, I I I think you could go either way. Um, the bond is to make sure, you know, that they're installed properly and that they survive, um, and you know, that that.
This this is a well-established condominium with some folks who will be mighty upset when they die, if if any of them die, so they would get replaced. So I I I, it's fine, the monitoring or bond either way, uh, at the commission's pleasure, but I I I believe the. The condominium association, which is paying for this repair and whatnot, will want assurances from contractors and whatnot that. Uh, anything that doesn't survive would be replaced as well. That's my belief.
Commissioner Marzkey, just a question about the trees, is there any concern about the number of trees provided for that space?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I I I think the number is okay, my concern, um. Was mostly in regards to making sure. The, I think particularly the oak between the pavement and the the retaining wall, I was a little bit concerned about its ability. To do well in that location and not cause issues, um. So, I I think that the number of plantings is is. There's definitely enough proposed, um, and we don't wanna end up with a situation like what's out there right now. Where the vegetation's causing issues, um, so I I think that. The fact that there's some smaller trees proposed, um, is kind of good. Alright, so where did we land with the, um, the bond?
I I guess, the I I'd like to, if we are gonna waive the bond, have. An indication of the rationale so that we don't. Wind up with the next application saying, well, we did.
Perhaps it's that you don't leave the bond, I'm just, I'm just wondering if I should be putting forth that language for you guys as well.
Well, we let's look at the monitoring, uh, language, I know you were looking for that.
I'll screen share now, and it does have the bond language and you can figure it out from there.
Can you zoom that a little higher or increase the text size? There we go, thank you.
If if I might, uh, as as you all read, if if I might just jump in and say on on number. Or part B there, if if we could change that to wetland scientist and or landscape architect. Must approve any alteration, that would be great, um. I I I think they're well qualified to to also.
This is Commissioner Marzkey, is there, um, I know we have the option of not choosing the bond, obviously, but. Is, is there a reason why we, I we're we're, I know. One of the commissioners is proposing that we not have the bond, but is there some reason why we shouldn't?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, um. So this activity is very close to the wetland, so I do think it would be typical for the commission to consider a bond, um, and potentially require a bond. Um, I think the reason that gives me the most hesitancy is that this is a repair project, um. And so we kind of wanna encourage them to do it because failure to re- repair the wall could result in impacts to the wetland. However, that being said, it's also important that it's. Done appropriately and that we're not taking step backs, steps back, and you know, we still do wanna make sure that there's some vegetation there. Um, and that they're restoring that aspect of what they're removing, so. I think an argument can be made. I think, um, typically do, based on proximity, the commission will require a.
This is Commissioner Vasman, Jamie, do we not have uh an option on, um, cash and surety?
We do, so erosion controls have to be cash, um, planting. Monitoring, that could be surety, so that's a reduced financial burden on. Monitoring, that could be surety, so that's a reduced financial burden on whatever.
Right. I, I guess. My, my head is, um, yes, a bond is. Uh, warranted because of the proximity to the wetland, at the same time, because. Um, it's a effort to try to correct a failing situation. Uh, that we not impose a cash bond, but a surety bond would be acceptable.
This is Commissioner Mersky, I'm in agreement with that compromise.
And that's built into the regs, but, um. You want me to make it part of the motion?
Uh, I guess do we? Need to memorialize?
The, the regs indicate that a surety bond is acceptable, so.
Oh, okay, great. And, and, and it doesn't say a hundred, um, it doesn't require. Uh, or doesn't preclude a hundred percent surety?
I'll just put surety bond is acceptable.
Right.
This is Commissioner Armrod, I guess I'll just say, um, uh. That, uh, this, that sounds fine to me too, thank you.
This is Commissioner Basman, I think the other, um, condition that we didn't, uh. Catch in that initial review was Commissioner Armrod's, uh, issue on the, uh, outlet protection. Do we need to just amend that? Yeah. I would change that from should to shall. Let's make it a little stronger. Yeah, there you go. Any other, um, additions or comments from the commission? This is Commissioner Basman, Jamie, can you draw one through nine up on the screen? Okay. Five and six, seven and eight. Okay. Is. Any commissioner want to make a motion regarding? Uh, this application? I guess I will then, uh, we will make a motion that regarding inland wetland twenty-five oh three oh two. One oh one Hotchkiss Grove Road, remove and replace of a failing. Uh, timber retaining wall. Uh, that we approve. Uh, the application, uh, and in accordance with the staff report dated, can you throw that up at the top, Jamie? Uh, regarding the staff report of April tenth. Two thousand twenty-five with the. Uh, conditions illustrated in that report. Um, that's the motion. Do I hear a second?
This is Commissioner Gokalski, I'll second that motion.
Is there any, uh, changes or discussion on that motion?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Welling agent, do you want to extend that to include the conditions ten and eleven drafted during the meeting?
I. Thought with this staff report added ten and eleven that I did that, but. Being specific with the addition of items number ten and eleven added during the meeting of April tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
This is Commissioner Gokalski, I second that amendment.
Alright, I'm going to take a vote here, Commissioner Mersky?
Commissioner Mersky, aye.
Commissioner Armrod?
Commissioner Armrod, aye.
Commissioner Gokalski?
Commissioner Gokalski, aye.
Commissioner Basman, aye. Okay.
Thank you very much for your time, um. Greatly appreciated, have a great evening.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we now have some enforcement activity as staff noted, uh, earlier in the meeting that. Uh, twenty Huntington, uh, Drive. Uh, is going to be tabled, discussion to commence, I guess, at the April twenty-fourth meeting? Is that correct, Jamie?
No, I'm actually re- recommending the May eighth meeting to make sure the survey is available.
Okay, we're continuing, uh, the discussion on. Uh, hundred twenty Huntington Drive, both the season correct as well as the ELD. Uh, for twenty Huntington Drive till the May meeting. Next up, season correct twenty-four oh nine oh two, one seventy, one eighty-two Elite Island Road, clearing and earth disturbance without a permit. Which is a continuation of the show cause hearing, you've got some recent material, Jamie, on this?
Yeah, Jamie Frederick and the Welling agent, can I actually request like a three to five minute recess real quick before we move into the next item?
Absolutely. Yeah, Commissioner Basman, we're going to reconvene. In, in the wetland meeting of, uh, April tenth. And it's now, uh, eight nineteen. Uh, we were at, uh. Twenty-four oh nine oh two. I believe you have some recent material, Jamie?
Jamie Frederick and the Welling agent, so since the last meeting, we've received a new wetland report from, uh, the new wetland scientist. Um, we have also received a couple revised plans, um, and some supplemental material. Uh, I don't believe we received a project narrative, um, so hopefully. Uh, we can at least get some verbal insight, uh, explanation as to the proposed. Activities, so the commission can consider how they fall relative to their jurisdiction, um, I'm thinking probably best to start with the soil scientists. Going over their. Report and findings, um, and. Unless the property owner wants to start.
No, Jim, would you like to start? You just have to hit the, the mute.
Yeah, I think you should just give them an overview, um, as to, you know, what occurred, um, prior to me getting involved.
Would that be okay with everyone, uh, Rick and Oforo, I'm the, um, landowner. At one seventy, one eighty-two.
And if you want me to screen share anything that was submitted, just let me know and I'll pull it up.
Okay, great, so I mean, I could just run through it real quick, I don't want to hold up too much time with redundancies, um. But, um, you know, just for, to put in perspective about the, the history of the, of the, uh, property, it was prior to this. Um, right before I, I bought it, it was farmland. Um, if, if everyone is familiar, remembers that. Um, there was an access. A road that went into there, it was, um, you know, used for various operations in the farm. Um, and then I also just kind of, just to put everything else that follows this into perspective. What is, um, there's also. Been changes in. The natural drainage, uh, pathway on the site, which you could see on some of the maps that will, uh, we could point out that I've provided. Um. And it was impacted. By, uh, past. Um. Changes from municipalities, the, the town or the, and, and or the state with the storm, um, water drainage. That was installed. And runs, um. Down a, probably a few, couple hundred feet from Leetson Road, then connects to another. Catch basin and then comes down to the land, onto the property. Which is since. Redefined. The drainage pathway or intermittent waterway, um, the way you guys, uh, refer to it. Um, so I mean, that's, that was what had impacted things in the past, um, as far as changing that, uh, we had. Past problems with flooding. Um, that occurred because no one was tending to that and was introducing sediment which could be seen. In a big raised bed. Just past that new waterway, which is, you know, has a indentation. Following that, that drainage path, so these are just things to keep in mind and, and, you know, it works up to some other things that I'm going to get to. The extent of the work that has been done at the property, um, clearing of, and unsaved trees. Um, the cleanup and, uh. Um. Removal of vines and invasive weeds, which George Logan, who previously, uh, spoke on my behalf. Um, also, you know, stated that in past, um, in, in the past meetings. Um, and basically, there was a, I did on the non, non-wetland area and, um, basically it was. Maintain some sort of area where I could have access for a, a drive-through from my parents' property. So at this time, there's no, there's no road coming in from the street. You have that new water line, right, and, um. And that's kind of where we're at, at this point, I'm looking to farm it, small farm. Uh, doing maple syrup, honey with the bees, um, as well, I wanted to, would do that, and I showed that kind of out. Outline of. Uh, you know, approximate use of, of it in some of these diagrams that I, I provided. Um. Basically. I'm looking to, uh. The proposed activities for the future use of it is to grow and harvest the maple syrup, like I said, production of the harvesting of, of honey. Um, I need access to the land for the farm, to, to, you know, to use, utilize for the farm, the in and out of the operations. Equipment, such things as that, and then, um. You know. Eventually expansion of that as well with cropping and plants and things of that similar, um. So as, as, as I have underst- come to understand the regulation. Which I have section twenty-two eight dash forty permitted operations and uses as a right. I also attached. Um, it was from the state, it was O, um, O L R, um, memorandum. Uh, Jamie also provided me with a pamphlet from the state regarding that, and they both more or less have the same definition. But just a quick overview of it, I know you guys probably know it, but just to make kind of some reconnections here. You know, that grazing farming nurseries, harvesting their crops. Farm, farm ponds less than three, and activities conducted by the Department of Energy. Da-da-da for purposes of wetland and water course, enhance, enhancement, these are all, um. Uh, permitted rights of use. And basically, the way I, I'm reading it is, uh. It, it, it says that it should not include road construction. Um. That, or erection of buildings not directly related to farming operations, and then also not to relocate. Water courses with continual flow, or filling or reclamation of wetlands or water courses with continual flow. Um, and then it goes on about timber, uh, cutting timber, da-da-da-da, with that which is impertinent to this. So, and then also I read into some of the more detailed stuff from the state website, and tilling. Tilling and replenishing of soils is, is a permitted use on that, even though it, one could argue. That you're, you know. You're impacting something, I guess, with, with the soils of that, but what, well, that's what I'm looking at, if you look at the drawings, the di- the, the diagrams. You'll see the old, the George Logan delineation, you'll see the updated delineation, which. The reason for doing that and, and, um, James will, could speak on that as well, but the reason I called him in was because. Of the drainage situation, because he is more of a specialist with the drainage as well as the wetlands, and. When I had him come out and look at that and, and we discussed that. You know. Some of the other things that were brought up were, you know, there was. you know, some of the other things that were brought up were, you know, there wasn't a lot of holes that were done in the initial and some of that had to do with, um, because of some of the stone fill in the, and then, you know, outside, I want to say outside work area, uh, wetland area there. It was hard to dig a little bit in, in some of the areas. So he did his best, um. Uh, James and, James and, um, George spoke, um, and I'll let them, uh, James discuss that with you, but um, they agreed that it was a tough site and, um, and that, uh, any additional data that, you know, um, to be, to be entered into that would be great. So that's kind of where I am. Um, my, my intentions moving forward and I do have a couple of line items. I don't know if this is the time to do it now, but as far as like things I would like to do, um, obviously I don't want to get ahead of myself, but.
Yeah. Can we hold off on the like to do's? I'd like to hear from.
Yeah, no problem. Sure. Sure, sure enough.
Mr. Cipperly, you have the floor?
Uh, yeah. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, up a little volume would help.
All right, uh, oh boy, up a little volume. Let's see, where is the volume? All right, how's, how's that better?
Better, yeah.
All right, I'll speak up a little louder. Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission and staff. For the record, um, my name is James Cipperly. I'm a certified soil scientist. I'm a member of the Society of Soil Scientists of Southern New England. I'm also a wetland, a Connecticut wetland scientist, a member of the Connecticut Association of Wetland Scientists, um. I also feel compelled to tell you that, um, I am the environmental planner for the city of Middletown and staffed the wetland commission there. Uh, been there for twenty-eight years. I also am the, uh, wetland agent for the town of Portland. Been there for twelve years and I sit on my, uh, hometown wetland commission in Basra. Um, I want to thank, uh, Jamie for her attention to this matter and her emails and calls regarding this notice violation. She's been, uh, very, very helpful. Um, I got involved with this, um, I visited the site first on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. And, um, I investigated, uh, the site that was previously, uh, looked at by George Logan. Um, upon, upon my investigation, the ground was frozen. And I really was unable to perform, uh, a proper, uh, to determine the, you know, the proper limits of the wetland soils because they were frozen. And when I called George that day, uh, I said, George, you know, uh, how did you place your flags? And he said, well, we use the pickaxe. Uh, Mr. Anofrio actually used the pickaxe um, and dug down to get to the subsoil to look at the soil layers. And they only got down, uh, in three areas, uh, three holes. So George said that he used, um, some information from a previous, uh, wetland delineation to use his flags there, R E S A one to R E S A, A thirteen. Um, when I went out there, uh, you know, the ground was frozen and I couldn't, I said, you know, I wish we had some kind of an excavator to maybe dig down through the frozen ground to, to look at the subsoil, because I guess there was, I thought there was a timing of the essence because of a violation. Um, when I, I talked to George, he said, listen, any additional information that you can get uh, as far as the subsoil goes, you know, I'll, I'll consider that and, um, you know, you tell me what you, what you find. So Mr. Anofrio said that his father had access to a small backhoe. So I said, why don't you bring it out here? And I placed some pink flagging in the areas, uh, where I thought that the line, the wetland line may have been or close to. Um, I didn't realize that that was potentially, uh, something that the commission and staff should have, should approve. Um, I, in my, in my towns, I usually allow that kind of, that type of a thing. But, um, I realize now that, um, you know, we should have gotten permission, but I can assure you that there was no placement of the equipment in the wetland. It was placed in the upland area and we reached out and dug down only like, uh, maybe eighteen inches, uh, twenty inches to look at the subsoil there. So, um, I, uh, I, I, I looked at that soil and I, um, understand that there was, uh, a previous wetland delineation some time ago. Uh, I looked at that, um. There was some flooding that was occurring in this wetland area off Leets Island Road because of a clogged drainage culvert underneath the driveway, the existing driveway. So water would back up, uh, quite a distance. I guess there was some old aerial photos of, of, of that. Um, since then, Mr. Anofrio cleaned that culvert out and the ponding of water significantly lowered and reduced, um, there. He did bring in some crushed stone, um, for access that he shows there. There was some disturbance previously of wetlands. When I did the delineation that is shown there in that blue line, there is some fill, uh, some crushed stone placed towards the wetlands in a few areas um, that can easily be removed. But, you know, again, this is going to be in agricultural, uh, use and he hasn't done anything that was going to block any flow. Um, he didn't do anything that has any erosion towards the wetlands. Um, the site is relatively flat. I put some flags down, um, with, um, there, there was really no vegetation in order to tie my flags. So I used the little metal uh, flags, orange flags, and I numbered them one through fourteen. They exist on the site. And, uh, Mr. Anofrio, uh, used a GPS app to track that line that is in blue that you can see in front of you. Um, if the commission decides that, and, and, and again, he did this work without coming to you to get your opinion upfront, whether or not this would be in agricultural use. That's, that's where he fails. Um, uh, he, he should have came to you before and you guys should have made a jurisdictional ruling on that, but he, that didn't happen. So this is where we are now. If the commission finds that, um, he should remove a little bit of the crushed stone from the wetland area out towards my delineation, we can use a wetland seed mix out there, a conservation mix to, um, that will contain wildflowers and native grasses that will, uh, help with mitigation. But he's planning on doing some agricultural silver culture. Um, he's got a nice stand of timber there now. Um, silver culture is considered, uh, by definition, uh, an act of agriculture. Uh, and agriculture is a permitted use as of rights. So, um, you can tie it in, uh, that way with your regs. Um, the wetland soils that are there are a rainum, um, silt loam, a poorly drained rainum silt loam. There is, uh, a water course that is to the, uh, if you're looking at the property uh, to the right along that stone wall, the property, yeah, exactly right there, there's another driveway. And there's a wetland, uh, area that kind of like, uh, drains underneath, uh, that driveway towards that wooded area that is, uh, 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 the wetland. Um, yeah, there you go.
This is the wetland on the Jason property that, that you was talking about goes under the driveway.
Thank you, Jamie. Yes, exactly, exactly. Yep, yep. So that's it in a nutshell. Um, you know, um, the area is, uh, you know, obviously very visible from, uh, Leets Island Road. Um, there is, there was, uh, maybe there still is some issues with drainage coming off of Leets Island Road onto this property. As long as this Anofrio maintains the culvert underneath the driveways, um, to the, uh, north, um, that will create a, a flow through there. He did cut down some shrubs, but there was a lot of, uh, invasive species that exist, multi-flora rose. Um, there's some, uh, invasive honeysuckle, some Asiatic, uh, bittersweet in there and some, um, Japanese honeysuckle and knotweed. So, um, he removed some of that vegetation and piled it along the edge of the road there. Uh, it's still there in a pile, um, that probably should be removed at some point in time. But, um, again, I can assure you that there's been no impact to the actual wetland on the site or off the site and, um, the minor grading that he did, um, did not have any erosion. Um, he should have contacted you and staff beforehand to get permission for that, but, uh, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Uh, Commissioner Bass, a question on, on, uh, what I think I heard, uh, Mr. Anofrio say, where he wanted access, um, uh, to a driveway, where is that going to occur?
So a- as of now, I didn't want to, I, I, and I spoke with Jamie, I sat down, um, in the office, um, at the town hall with Jamie on Tuesday, just to kind of go over some things here. I, I would obviously, at some point, whether I, whether it's going to complicate things now, then I would refrain from doing it. However, my goal, and I think it's reasonable, is that because of this drainage area that's coming out of, um, the pipes that were, that were dumped onto the, uh, property, to continue that piping and then tie into the rest of the piping on the contiguous properties next door. I mean, that would be great just along Leetson Road and then keep everything else to the side, which they, it, it, you know, it came up the sides of the property in, in the front there because of the flooding and this and that. Those are obviously wet areas. Um, so I mean, ideally it would be to put conduit piping in there and then drive over that, you know, I mean, just to get access to, to the site. You know, i- if that's something that's going to complicate and be a separate thing for an application for permit, if that's not a right to get out, to do something like that, even though it's, it was, you know, it was made by, um, you know, th- these, uh, actions, which, you know, I, I'm still kind of going through, uh, some information with that. I mean, that would be ideal, but for the present time to put this all to bed and to continue on, if I had to come back to, to put an application in for a access road or if you guys want to tell me what you think the, um, you know, the agricultural exemption um, includes for getting access to that, because my, my, my interpretation was you're allowed to do, you know, you're allowed to make a, uh, a road for aggregate agricultural uh, purposes by definition, um, even if I just drove over it, but I would still need that that waterway, that intermittent waterway, um, you know, pipes to, to get access to that.
So, uh, Rick, um, with all due respect, um, this is the first I'm hearing about this plan, um.
Uh, it's, it, yeah, I mean, obviously I need a road, you know what I mean?
I wouldn't, I, I would not recommend that, um, for, for a couple of reasons. Um, number one, um, the, the water, the water that's being drained through there right now, um, is kind of free flowing. Um, it's not actually, uh, directed right now. It's not, it, it's braided. There's a braided flow. It's, there's not a, there's not a point source. There's not a defined channel and bank. Um, it, it kind of goes throughout the whole area like in a, a braided, uh, tributary, uh, to kind of uh, direct it and, and flow and, and have access there. I, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that, um.
You're saying from where it comes from through, through underneath the, underneath the road where, where it pipes out into there, that, that water when, after a rain event? Which is also connected to another catch basin? You don't see that defined channel in there?
It, it, it's, it's not, it's not that well-defined.
It's not that well. You're right. It's not that, it's not like a riverbed or anything.
This is rich harassment. Hang on, guys. I, I think we have an application in development here. We don't have an application yet. All right?
Well, I'm just looking to get.
This is Commissioner Goklowski. I have a question from Mr. Cipperly.
I'm, I'm not done, Commissioner Goklowski. All right, I, 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 for us to be able to view whether this is a right or not, I think we need a complete application, a narrative that says what's going to happen, what's going to be included in this project to evaluate the right.
Well, didn't I just kind of do that?
We're not there yet.
What do you, what do you, what would you need to see additional?
So bare minimum for the jurisdictional ruling request, we need to see a site plan showing the proposed activity and a narrative outlining those activities. So this afternoon you submitted a couple of revised plans. I haven't had a whole lot of time to look at them. I'm a little bit confused. One of them says proposed area for drainage to be piped.
That was the, that was what I was just talking about.
I'm not sure where you're proposing to pipe from this plan.
It's the front, it's the front conduit that we were just talking about. And I just said, I, if we had to take that off the table, then we would. So I'm just trying to get an idea where where, we, we are where we are. We have a new delineation here. And whatever the course is moving forward, let's take the, take the road out of the thing for now and, and just, I, I'd like to be able to.
You guys gotta get together and decide what the application is.
What? Last I was on this, you told me it wasn't an application. It was a, it was a request for a jurisdictional ruling. And, and I wasn't to follow that stuff, you know what I mean?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, you're correct. Right now we've got a cease and correct order and a jurisdictional ruling on the table.
Trying to get past that, right.
We do not have an application at this point. However, I think what you're describing would require an application because if you're proposing to pipe
Let's take that off the table because I just confused everybody. I, I need to get access through there at one point. And from the literature and I got the farm, I'm in the farm bureau from what I, what I've been told, okay, I had the, from the state, the, the Connecticut Farm Bureau. Is, is that these things are all reasonable things that, that you guys could decide on working with me on or not as far as that, that conduit that the town made, uh, with, you know, without any repercussions at this point. So what I'm just asking for is just take that off the table if that's confusing everybody. I'm trying to get all my, all my things on one spire, but I'm trying to get past this. I don't know how many more times, you know, I'm gonna, I could do this as far as the, uh, as far as the meetings and everything else with, what, what, I mean, what do we? I want to, I want to do my farming. I want to use the land as it is. And this is where the lines are. Wha- what do you want me to do after this? Take off the, the piping, okay?
All right, we'll talk about that another time and we'll discuss what we currently have before us based on activities that have occurred. Um, and we can also look at your, 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 um, proposed D hives as well. So one of the questions that I had was in regards to Mr. Cipperly's report. He mentioned that there's some stone in the wetland area, um, as he delineated it, but from this plan, it's not really clear where those areas are. Um, could either of you provide a little bit of context as to that? I was hoping we'd be able to meet out there. I know it was last minute. Um, but unfortunately we weren't able to arrange something this week.
Yeah. It's just a little bit of, it's overflow from the line, the blue delineation line. There's a little bit here, a little bit there, not so much on the corners on the left and right, that, that's all soil, all untouched.
Kind of in the center area below.
And yeah, exactly. So in that center line, it's approximately, um, the overall is about three hundred and sixteen linear feet with, all right? And then, so I would say maybe a hundred and seventy-five linear feet times, you know, six, six feet or something, maybe, I, 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 a different, different areas, different, different lengths, but it's not a whole lot really, you know, as far as over, overflow on his line.
My wetland delineation line shown in blue towards Leets Island Road, uh, within, like he said, about a hundred and twenty-five feet or so. Um, there is some stone beyond my line towards the wetland and it's probably, like he said, five to six feet um, here and there. So, um, I would love to meet you on site, Jamie, to, to, to look at it. Um, I, I know we, we, we were gonna look at that, um, this week, uh, the timing and the rain just wasn't gonna work out. So um, I'd be more than happy to meet you out there and show you. Um, I did take some photos, um, I believe. Oh, yeah, yeah, the photos that I sent to you should show that as a matter of fact. Oh, my God. Um, so this is the wetland proper. This, this, this right here is what Mr. Anofrio is saying that there's like a channel that he might want to, um.
No, that's not it.
Oh, that's not it?
No.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
That's just, uh, that's a portion of just the wetlands that weren't touched by stone. So that's one, one of the areas.
Yep.
That's, I know you, it's, that's not the right picture for that one, but.
Okay.
Think you sent some other ones.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. So, all right, so this is, this is the outlet underneath the existing driveway that was collecting trash and a lot of runoff stuff from Leets Island Road through his property. He put that trash rack there to be able to collect debris and trash and easily clean it. Yes, okay. Now, now I see the whole photo. Uh, before I was just one section. Okay. Yep, that's the photo of the culvert underneath the driveway. Okay, this photo here is the wetland proper where that is basically the full, that's, that's basically the channel. If you will, that he was talking about, right, and right, Rick, now, this is where you wanted maybe to, to do a culvert? So you could drive.
No, it still doesn't look, that still doesn't look right yet, I mean, it's close, but it's hard to tell without a back to corner, I have pictures of that, I mean, you know what I mean, what it looks like, I don't know, they're not in your photos?
Well, keep going down.
We'll keep going through them.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, now, now, this is, again, this is the wetland proper that is towards the adjacent property going up, so let's get one more, the next, the next photo will probably show Oh yeah, okay, that's another one, that, that's the wetland proper, no disturbance or anything there, okay, here we go. Yeah, that wetland flag, can you scroll down a little more? Okay, yeah, go, go back up, I guess then, yeah, so tha- that wetland flag. I, did I have one more photo, I think I might have, there's a dog in it.
Uh, these are the only photos I received.
Oh, okay. Well. Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to say from, from this, sorry about that.
This is Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, you had an issue with where the stone was, I think we have some indication of that, I, I'm sure we're going to want to see that on a, on a map somewhere, did you have any other issues that are still outstanding?
Well, I think we still need the project narrative, I'm just going through real quick and double checking my, my inbox to make sure I don't have any additional photos. It looks like I have five, and I believe the other's five in the document, so that, that is all that I have, I do have photos from when I went out to the site with the property owner and George Logan. They do show that there is a bit of a, a channel along the edge of the property. But I don't know that we want to get sucked into the conversation of this road, which we've kind of already decided to table, it sounds like. So I, I think moving forward, very high level, the main concerns are clarifying the extent of stone in the wetlands, having a narrative of the activities that have happened slash are proposed to happen, and how any of the activities are essential to the farming activities. And I think kind of to maybe perhaps help see if there's any additional information, we do also have a plan that shows proposed beehives within the wetland area. So I think, you know, are these I think there's going to be questions regarding how those beehives are going to be situated on the site, whether there's going to be vegetation removal maintenance.
You, you guys need, you guys need real detailed stuff like that just for an exemption use? I'm not building a road, I'm not, I'm not changing or excavating, and I'm just using the land, I'm still need to do. I mean, you know what I mean, like, you want me to know exactly?
If you want to get a proper review, yes.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna want me to know where it's exactly where to spot those, or that's not good enough, that drawing?
No.
No, so like, are you going to be?
You guys already initially told me an A two survey was not necessary for this, even though that is to scale. That, that, that is the scale. What would you, what would you require from me, so I'm very, so I'm clear?
So the, the, the fact that the drawing is to scale is in alignment with what the commission requested, that's not what's at, being questioned. As being questioned is whether all of the activities are shown on the plan. And a project narrative helps with that, if you have a project narrative, it can, if you, there's something you can't necessarily really show on the plan. The project narrative helps explain that process, so the commission can understand. And they can review and say, yep, that's agricultural, that's exempt, good luck. Or they can say, you know what, this is agricultural, but we don't really see how this is. Or what have you, but if they don't have a full scope of what it is you're doing. They can't review it and say, yeah, that's agricultural and it's exempt, so we need to have.
You need, you need a sentence saying what we just said together in front of everybody, right? I mean, that's basically, we're just reiterating on paper, because I have that right here. And I put it together, so that's what you're looking for, when I do this and I meet with you next time, is that going to say, well, that's not detailed enough?
I don't know, because I haven't seen it.
What are your, what is your specification on what you need to see? I, I could tell you right now, everything that we had to discuss on, there's, the land is the land, you have trees on, on, on the majority of the, of the, of the plot. Okay, and then you have this little section of, of the area, which is going to be where you're going to do anything else, I mean, that, that's, so it, it, I could, I could relay that onto, onto a piece of paper and write that as a narrative, and that's going to do it for you guys?
So, when we met on Tuesday, we had talked about showing where the stone is in the wetlands, based on the.
That's shown on the map, anywhere it's not, anywhere you see the roads coming in with the, with the stone, if you want.
Right, but, but we've just discussed that it does extend down partially into the revised wetland delineation, you have it stopping short of there. So, so that should be revised to reflect the actual extent. You should be addressing.
I have square footage and everything else for that, but, 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 okay.
So, I mean, one of the things the commission will be considering is whether or not the beehives constitute fill. And so part of that question will be, are you establishing a road up to these beehives, are you just going to walk into the wetlands and you know, harvest your, your trays? What's going to be your process relative to activities in the wetlands? And then in regards to the stone that's placed in the wetland, the commission's going to want to know how that's essential to the farming operation, because if it's not essential to the farming operation. They're probably going to request that it's removed and restored.
Yeah, so you want, all my thoughts that I just keep reiterating, you want that just listed in an outline form, so you guys can look at it, check it off, but basically, it's everything we've just basically been touching upon, alright.
I mean, we haven't gotten to all of those details, but yes, we need, we need everything written out.
I, I'm clear on what you are requesting now, Jamie, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for clarifying some things, and I, I do believe that, I know the concerns about the beehives there, they could probably be moved toward the, towards the north, closer to the delineation line, the land's still open there. The beehives, well, we could talk about that at, at the next meeting, but yeah, I, I got some ideas about that, thank you, okay.
Alright.
So I guess regarding the cease and correct twenty-four oh nine oh two, we're going to continue the show cause hearing until the next meeting?
Well, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I think we should discuss when we continue it too, so there, there obviously is still a little bit of homework, I'm happy to meet either in the office or in the field with with, you know, the property owner and as well, and scientists to kind of go over some of those things, maybe after you, you know try giving it a first go, and then I can take a look at what you have, and let you know if we need, if I think the commission is going to want more.
Yeah. Definitely go through you prior to the meeting, yep.
Do have a public hearing that was continued to the April twenty-fourth meeting, so I would potentially suggest in light of that and the fact that they're going to need some time, the May eighth meeting.
The eighth would be great, yeah, thank you.
And yeah, if there's any, I think another thing that will be important is, of course, if there's anything that you decide is not agricultural or essential to the farming operation in the wetland, there should be a mitigation plan for that activity. Or if you're not proposing a mitigation plan, you should say why it's essential to the farming operation. And then I think another thing the commission's going to want to know, and maybe the beehives play into this, but there was some understory vegetation removed, it sounds like a lot of it was invasives, I do recall seeing some invasives on site. Are you planning on managing that so that the invasives don't just come right back into that area, or are you planning to? What, what's your plan with the area that you have removed vegetation from, would be important as well.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
See you guys, May eighth.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Very much, guys.
We have no new applications, item seven. Other business in the wetland nineteen eleven oh one, eleven fifty-one West Main Street. We have an update, I guess, on the compliance and a bond return request, turn it over to you, Jamie.
Okay, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. Alright, give me one minute to kind of think about how I want to pull this up into context, because we have at least one new commissioner that will have no idea what we're talking about. Alright, so eleven fifty-one West Main Street, this is the Aldi Chase Bank site. Just to high level, get everyone up to speed with what we're talking about. So last year, the commission reviewed a revised mitigation plan, because the mitigation that was implemented didn't meet all of the criteria that was proposed as part of the initial mitigation package. So there were some modifications, it was acknowledged the hydrology was different than what was initially intended, however that there is still nexus, and that, you know, it does provide some flood retention, and it does, it does have hydrology during wet conditions. So there was a revised planting plan approved, the revised planting plan was planted, not a hundred percent as proposed, so I have requested a soil scientist go out, do their initial investigation and determine whether it was close enough to meet the, the goals of the revised approved plan. And as part of that revised approved plan, the commission reset the monitoring period, so we're back at year zero essentially, so this will be year one, so I've been in correspondence with the current property owner, who is not the same property owner as when the development was constructed. And he knows that he needs to get somebody on board, the, the wetland scientist that was initially part of the project, is not able to stay on. So he's looking for somebody else that can do the monitoring for him, he does have all habitats doing the invasive, invasive species management. But we need somebody to do the monitoring for us to address the plant survivability and, you know, general compliance, like I said. That is, it's the planting location, should the planting locations be acceptable, or are there modifications that need to be made? So, long story short, I'm sure you've all been at least by the Aldi Chase site. You can see that construction has been done for some time. I did go out and do another inspection just to be sure as part of this request. This request is for the release of the erosion control portion of the bond, so a significant, a decent amount of the erosion control bond was released a while back. But the commission held on to part of it because there was still a little bit of stability and the mitigation in the back concerns as well. So there's a bond for erosion controls, and there's a bond for the monitoring plantings and monitoring reports. So they're requesting release of the erosion control portion of the bond, which I do think is appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate to release the mitigation bond, because we're still waiting for the assessment of whether the mitigation essentially is acceptable in the way that it has been revised. And also for those survivability type reports as well. So, I will, does anyone want to look at a site plan, or are we good with kind of moving forward with that information, and looking at the memo that I've drafted?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to just share the latest memo, we can always go back if we need to, because there's been a little bit of movement through this process. So, we have a total of sixty-nine thousand, well currently, per the reduced amount, we need to have sixty-nine thousand and eighty-three dollars on hand. Thirty thousand four hundred and ten of that is for the erosion controls, and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-three is for mitigation and monitoring, wait, I'm reading, but you're not seeing, are you?
Jamie, this is Commissioner Goklowski. The bonds that, that are being held by, is the new property owner requesting these the release of the bonds, or is it the previous owner that is going to be getting the bonds money back?
So it was the developer that submitted the bonds, it was Giordano Construction Company. So they've requested the release, the current property owner has also requested that their funds be returned to them. It would be the, the person that submitted the bonds that would have any cash bond.
So it's Giordano Construction Company?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Who? My, my question is, right now that we have issues that are not corrected. I, I don't know why we would want to release anything at this stage of the game.
Well, so we have bonds for different things, right? So the sediment and erosion controls for, for the general full site construction, so that would be, you know, around the proposed buildings. Would also be relevant to the mitigation area, I think we're probably at a point with the mitigation area where we wouldn't need to hold on to an erosion control bond. Even if they have to move a couple plants around, I don't see that as being you know, something that would require an erosion control bond, especially in light of the fact that we have that general mitigation and monitoring bond, and there are some things out there that are doing well. So I do think it would be appropriate and reasonable to release the erosion control portion of the bond, which is thirty thousand four hundred and ten dollars. So essentially to reduce the bond to the thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-three. As part of the consideration of reducing the bond, there's a cash bond and a surety bond. So, the sure, the cash bond is thirty-four thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. The surety bond on file currently is forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty. However, the commission has previously released it and reduced it down to thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. So I think it would be appropriate to kind of max the retention of the surety bond to thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, does that make sense? Because essentially they have something that approves that they could reduce the surety to that amount. We did receive continuation of the surety in the full forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty amount from on April second to the, to March eighteenth of twenty twenty-six. So, as I've already indicated, I recommend release of the sediment and erosion control portion of the bond. Should determine whether to release cash and or surety. If the commission holds the surety, the bond must be renewed prior to March eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. Or a new bond must be established by the current property owner to take its place. Failure to renew or replace a surety bond would be a violation of the permit terms and could result in issuance of fines and or season correct order. Which could be filed on the land records, so just keep in mind that a surety bond has to be renewed annually. If we didn't get that renewal, we'd probably ultimately fall on the property owner, because the property owner is ultimately responsible for permit compliance. So rather than pursuing Giordano Construction, we pursue the property owner if we were struggling to get that surety renewal, should we retain surety? And then I've kind of outlined in general for the, since the release was, the release request was from the developer, I just outlined some of their options in regards to further release of the bond, one is to wait until the site is fully in compliance with the permit. And the others to request that another party such as the new property owner put forth the bond, at which point we would release the bond that we have on file. So, long story short. I think the two questions are, does the commission agree that it's appropriate to release the thirty thousand four hundred and ten dollars, and if so, how do you want to release it? And I, I think my recommendation would be that like I said, if, I think you should retain the maximum surety you should count on retaining is thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Which would mean the maximum you could reduce the cash bond by or two would be four thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-two cents.
Commissioner Bassman, do that last math again, the thirty-four five fifty-nine, yeah, and, and the thirty-four ten or whatever the hell it was, right, or thirty thousand four ten, is that how you got it?
So basically, I think what I actually did is I, I took thirty-eight thousand. Because the numbers don't quite match up, so I think what I did was I took thirty-eight thousand and I subtract the thirty-four thousand number from it. And so that would be the cash portion, so you would retain thirty-four thousand surety. Thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-nine, thirty-eight cents, and then, and then that would. And then, uh, and then that would leave a balance of four thousand one hundred and thirteen and sixty-two cents for. Um, I think the last.
And it, it has been our, it has been our practice to release the soil and erosion once the project is complete.
Once the site is stable, it's generally been your practice to release the erosion control portion of the bond. And like I said, I don't anticipate the mitigation and monitoring. Well, they might have to make some corrections back there. I don't expect them to be significant. I don't expect them to be of an erosion control concern. Um.
And just a question, how do we make sure we don't miss the, uh, March twenty-six date?
Good question. So we would have to put it in our, our calendar essentially as staff to make sure that we get that. And then make sure we follow up with the property owner. Uh, and we haven't, so historically until two thousand and seventeen, I think, the commission did not accept surety bond. Um, so this is kind of new territory for us. We haven't really had a lot of experience with sureties expiring. Um, so, um, but it would be non-compliance with the permit and, you know, there certainly is a cost and, and, um, you know, there, there's a burden to having a surety bond in place, but you, I, you basically hoping that the threat of fines and or filing a season correct order on the land records is enough to make sure you get that continuance. And or, I mean, yeah, and so certainly like we want to make sure we have compliance this year and if not, start pouring on the bond because.
Right.
Um, and, and so, you know, making sure we're geared up for compliance next year too. So.
Mm-hmm.
We might be back. Year from now.
Any member of the commission feel it's not appropriate to return the soil and erosion portion?
Commissioner Armron, now, I, yeah, it sounds right. I mean, if it's, if it's stable and, and that's our past practice, then, uh, it seems about, you know, right timing to release that portion of it.
And I guess the second question is, are we okay with the majority that's coming out of the cash? Um, side of the equation and, uh, maintaining the thirty-four five fifty-nine, thirty-eight surety.
And the reason why I did that math is because the, that the bondholder has of course requested that the maximum cash be released.
This Commissioner Mersky, I apologize. I don't know the whole history and I, I don't want to delay, delay the issue at this hour, but.
It may be a blessing.
To not delay or to, I should delay.
Not know the history.
Uh, well, I, I just. I'm just going to ask one question. No, no, no.
No, yes.
Okay, um, just considering what I know about bonds and other contexts and this, what, listening to what you're saying, do you, considering the history of this application and, um, cooperation, lack of cooperation of the parties based on what you all know, um, I mean, has there been difficulty in compliance? The reason I ask is because obviously the impact of cash versus surety can make a difference and they're asking for release of cash. I mean, that's how I'm seeing it, but I don't know, is there a brief statement some, uh, someone on the commission or Jamie could make about their behavior, their willingness to comply or difficulties? It sounds like there's been some challenges.
This is Commissioner Gopalsky, uh, Giordano Construction, uh, has always been conforming to anything. They've been a longstanding business in the Branford community. Um, I personally don't have a problem with the release of the cash portion. Um, my only concern was the other mitigating factors that were lingering with the property that, uh, is, it seems to be no fault of, of what the bondholder has, has done. Um, so, you know, i- if, if you called Giordano Construction Company up tomorrow and asked them to get out to a site and do something, they'll be out there to do it. So I mean, they're very, uh.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. I, I don't want to play the blame game and I don't want to, you know, speak ill of anyone. I, I, I think that there's been good intentions kind of around. Um, I mean, so one of the permit conditions was that prior to the installation of the mitigation, there should be a pre construction meeting to go over everything and that, ever, all the work should be overseen by a wetland scientist. Neither of those two things happened. And then there were questions about whether or not it was done correctly. Um, and we've tried to get answers. We've kind of gotten half, we've gotten answers. We, we ended up doing a revised plan. You know, I, I don't know where, where we're at now. So has it been all smooth sailing? No. Um, is that the fault of the bondholder or the current property owner? Or just, you know, the mix of everything that's happened because of course there was a previous property owner also involved. And, you know, whether accepting of the project, I don't know. I don't want to get into that. Um, but there have been some problems with the compliance regarding the mitigation area. Um, I would say there weren't problems with the erosion control aspect, um. And, you know, if you want me to do any math for a different split of cash versus surety, I'm willing to help work through that. Um, I did also do a fifty-fifty calculation because the commission has done that in the past. Um.
You're just, this is Commissioner Mersky. Sorry, you, you just said that there hasn't been, you haven't, you haven't expressed concerns about the erosion control, excuse me, erosion control portion. And that's what this is about, basically this bond. So you're saying there has not been concern regarding that matter. So.
That, that's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, I think a better, I think a split, a different split is better, but if that's not the majority, if that's not the agreement as a majority on this commission, then that's fine.
If you were to split the bond reduction between the cash and surety portion fifty-fifty, it would leave a cash bond of fifteen thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cents. And it would reduce the surety to nineteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
And our lot, Commissioner Bassman, and our logic for fifty-fifty is we've done that in the past.
That's essentially what it would fall upon. Um, if you would like, I think one other thing we could do that might be beneficial. So we can look at the bond regulations. So I think the other thing that's kind of playing, I mean, ultimately the, I, ultimately the commission can decide how they want to reduce the bond. But, um, in the bond regulations, we have the agency may require as a permit condition, the filing of a bond with such surety and such amount and in the form approved by the agency. The permitting shall submit and itemize the estimate for the items to be bonded, yada, yada, yada. Um, all bonding for sediment and erosion controls measures must be submitted cash check, certified check, unless otherwise approved by the agency for town council or in town council. So, so the only place where we specifically, and it is not saying that you can't on a case by case basis make a determination, but the only thing that we specifically in our regulations require cash for is sediment and erosion control measures. But of course, on a case by case basis, you could, you could make a determination. Um.
So this, do we have, this Christian Bassman, do we have agreement that, yes, the bond should be returned and the only issue now is the math? Is that, is that where we're at? And if fifty-fifty is been a prior, prior practice, in, in some respect, we'd need a reason why we would do something different, Jamie, right?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, um, yeah, I mean, so I think fif- based on past practice, I think fifty-fifty or if you wanted to, to throw your weight behind thirteen point one B, that could be your logic for going with the bond holder's request and reducing more of the cash. Um, and surety.
Would you say thirteen?
Either decision. I'm sorry?
Did, did you say thirteen point one B?
Yeah. It wasn't specifically, um, determined one, one way or the other and, and, and the, this permit was issued prior to the implementation of these regulations. However, when they submitted the bond, they did request to use these regulations because they provide more leniency for surety than our previous regulations did. So just to add mud on top of mud.
So could you go back to the, the sheet with the math on it? So i- i- if you do the fifty-fifty, did I hear you say we'd end up with a cash, uh, bond on hand of fifteen or thereabouts?
Fifteen one hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-one.
Oh, that's a twenty thousand dollar reduction in cash. Pretty substantial. I'm liking fifty-fifty. That's, that's one man vote fifty-fifty. Commissioners can certainly, uh, deviate from that.
Commissioner Mersky, I'm in agreement with that.
This is Commissioner Gopalsky. I'll agree with the fifty-fifty split. You need a motion, uh, Jamie, on that?
Yes, please.
It is Commissioner Bassman. I make a, uh, motion regarding inland wetland nineteen eleven oh one, one eleven, pardon me, eleven fifty-one West Main Street regarding the request to return a bond for the soil, uh, pardon me, the sediment and erosion control measures, uh, that we return, uh, that portion of the bond dealing with, uh, the sediment and erosion controls. And that the return be a fifty-fifty percent of the total amount split between cash and surety.
Commissioner Mersky, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, just to clarify, that would be a reduction of fifteen thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents to each bond for a total of fifteen thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cents for the cash bond and a total to remain nineteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents for a surety bond.
That sounds like a, uh, good friendly amendment. Does that work for you, Commissioner Mersky?
Does. Commissioner Mersky, yes.
Alright, uh, take a vote here. Commissioner Gokalsky?
Commissioner Gokalsky, aye.
Commissioner Armron?
Commissioner Armron, aye.
Commissioner Mersky?
Commissioner Mersky, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. Thank you for that work, Jamie. That's, uh, not something that we deal with every day.
It is not, luckily.
We have no applications for receipt this evening. We have other business, uh, pardon me, we have, uh, no agent approval. We have nothing on correspondence and announcements. Any commissioner want to add anything to the record this evening?
Good night.
If not, good night.
Sounds like a motion to adjourn.
April, uh, twenty-seven? No.
April twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Enjoy the weekend, guys.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.